Good afternoon and welcome to the City of North Las Vegas City Council Meeting and Redevelopment Agency. We welcome you to these meetings. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the redevelopment meeting, and one at the beginning and one at the end of the city council meeting. So if you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you came in. And on the podium rail to my left over here, please give the card to city clerk. When we call upon you to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Pastor Dave Tatlock from the Oasis Church. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, this beautiful weather, and thank you for all the people that you've gathered here to help move our city forward and to help govern our city. Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom, understanding, and collaboration as they work together to help all of the residents of our city. God, government is your idea. It bothers me sometimes when people speak against government. It's your idea, and we just pray for their deliberations today, that the people are heard and that you would give them wisdom in all the decisions that they make. And may your grace rest upon all of us in this great city of North Las Vegas. Amen.
Please remain standing.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pastor Dave. Appreciate you coming and blessing this meeting. Tonight, we have a presentation for the business of the month as led by Councilman Barone. So let's go down front.
A full-time Councilman Barone. Yes, is Mr. David Bramlett here? He sure is. I'm one of his best customers, although I haven't been there in a little while, right? Now, my business of the month is none other than the legendary Bargain Pond. Now, they've actually been featured in other shows. There's another show about other pawn shop down the street up there like a little bit. But they've actually had episodes that were also filmed at Bargain Pond because they've also had experts to testify for, you know, the veracity of certain items, right, or the value of certain items. And I remember, I used to really like to hang out in Bargain Pond because at one point, when you went in there, it was, they had a display of firearms, classic firearms, every type of firearm you could possibly, I'm kind of like a firearm guy. And they used to have it, I mean, stuff from the Civil War, before the Civil War is up on there. It was really enjoyable to see that. So it really captured my imagination. But besides firearms, you know, they're one of our classic downtown North Las Vegas businesses. So I thought it'd be very fitting to, at this time, recognize them as the business of the month. You know, they've been one of these, you know, stalwart businesses, you know, got through the pandemic and got through the Great Recession, got through everything, been with us the entire time. So I definitely want to recognize them. For your information, Bargain Pond was established in 1986. The building was built from scratch in 1991, and they used to be located up the corner of Tonopah and Las Vegas Boulevard. The owner, George Bramlett, has always dreamed of having his own shop. He worked part-time for Stony's Pawn and Loan until an opportunity to open his own pawn shop arrived. Bargain Pond is a family-owned business. All the Bramlett family members had worked at the shop at some point in their lives. Now, David and Angela Bramlett are actively running the business. And here's a fun fact. Bargain Pond purchased the 1975 armored car used by NLVPD SWAT team as a landmark for the shop. So without further ado, let me go ahead and read this. Thank you so very much, Councilwoman. I appreciate it. For this one, I have to actually put my glasses on. So, "The City of North Las Vegas presents this certificate recognition to Bargain Pond, Inc., located at 1901 Las Vegas Boulevard North, for being an iconic business landmark in downtown North Las Vegas. Thank you for your invaluable contribution to the community." A few words?
Appreciate this. We've been there, like I say, about 35 years. So we feel like we're probably part of the North Las Vegas area there. We've seen a lot of changes and are going to see a lot of changes to come. So appreciate it. Thank you.
I went by there one time. One of my friends' children was in your parking lot. He's the guy with Imagine Dragons, and they were in your parking lot filming something going on. I went by and said hello, you know, but I know you've been there a long time, and you've got a great reputation in our community. And we never hear but good things about your organization. Thank you.
I live with a gun enthusiast and trying to convert me. I'm trying to get there, but they still kind of scare me, so I just need more education. But congratulations on your years of being a part of the North Las Vegas family, and we just look forward to continuous relationship in many more years.
And thank you very briefly. Now that I know where you are, now I'm going to come and visit you. So I enjoy looking at all of those things, too. So appreciate you staying with us in North Las Vegas for all of those years. Thank you so much.
We're moving on to council items. Councilman Barone?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. And of course, I always appreciate a chance to recognize one of our outstanding businesses. So here for, on April 17th, there will be a production, Passion of Christ production by Grupo Internacional de Actores Independientes. The international independent actors is going to be doing a presentation here in Liberty Park. It's a free event. I don't have the time, but I'm sure they'll put it out there. I think it's going to be in the early afternoon. There'll be a blood drive. When's the last time you gave blood? Vitalent Blood Drive on April 13th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here at City Hall on the second floor. To schedule an appointment, please go to www.donors.vitalent.org or just call 877-25-vital. Again, your donation might definitely be, it might be, you can be a hero, too. You can be a lifesaver for someone. I'm very happy that just last week, thanks to our library board and our library, a special thanks, of course, here to Forrest, our library director, we put on a Cesar Chavez panel discussion last week on March 29th, and it was a fantastic event. I think we educated quite a few people on who Cesar Chavez is. And our guest speakers included Eric Chavez, who is Cesar Chavez's grandson, oldest one, and he actually lives here in the area. We also had Marco Hernandez, a local labor leader, a vice president of the laborers, and another legendary civil rights, Latino civil rights icon, Mr. Moza Sumasparza, owner of the Maya Cinemas across the street. Finally, I'm very happy, I didn't get a chance to go, but we, of course, we have a small business connector here. We had the Connectors Jump Start Event on the 30th. I think the councilwoman went. Did you also go, Councilman? The councilwoman went. Did you go, Mayor? Okay, the councilwoman, oh, yeah, you were there, too. Yeah, I remember seeing pictures, right? I'm so proud that we're able to do this, to help our residents definitely grow their future. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of attending Watson Elementary yesterday. And April, excuse me, is Military Children's Month. And the school there, this is the second year that they did it, they presented about 35 certificates of awards with little dog tags that they made up to the children of all of the military people, moms and dads that are serving. And it was an amazing event, the first time I've had an opportunity to attend that. The children, they were so excited about getting, well, they were excited about getting the certificate, but more excited about the dog tags. And the room was packed with families, and everybody had a great time. So I have to say thank you to the librarian there and to the principal and all of the teachers involved in bringing that about. I did want to take a moment to also to thank Getting Outdoors Nevada for their work in cleaning up a lot of the areas here in North Las Vegas. They do this on a regular basis. They clean up our parks, and I was out there with them at Sandstone Ridge Park, and they did an amazing job. And we appreciate all the time and effort that they put into it. So I wanted to at least acknowledge them for that. And lastly, but not least, you know, we had a very good and amazing State of the City address this month with the mayor and the council there. It was, actually, it was a packed house. And all of the responses that I've gotten to date have been very positive. Appreciated, you know, the information that they received, and they're looking forward to many, many more good things from our city going forward. So thank you, Mayor.
No, my pleasure. Councilwoman Goinz-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday at Valley View Park is part of the Choice Neighborhood Revitalization Strategic Community Initiative, an organization hosted, it was called Beautify the Block. And we had a great turnout where they were partnered with the Just One Project that handed out food to the community. Chicanos Por la Casa was there giving out resources as well. I gave away some free COVID testing kits, and they went around throughout the neighborhood and painted addresses on the curb and then picked up any bulk trash that the residents had for them to pick up. So I'd just like to thank all of those who were involved in helping to make that a success. I also participated on, a couple days ago, with Attorney General Aaron Ford on the opioid press conference and just discussing how funds will be dispersed throughout the state of Nevada. And the Department of Health and Human Services is currently creating an assessment just to see how programs and services will be needed in each of areas of the state. And so the bottom line is that people who are facing addiction or addicted or going through some type of addiction process, that they get the health, education, and resources that they need is the bottom line, because too many people are dying, and we just have to kind of put an end to that period. That's just the bottom line. This morning, I had a great time at East Career Technical and Technical Academy. I conducted mock interviews with the seniors there, and I interviewed students in fields of marketing, culinary arts, education, and hospitality fields. And let me tell you, these seniors were sharp. They were with it. They are on it, and they are ready for that next chapter in their lives. And this Friday, on a different scale with our babies at Snuma, we're going to host pastries with parents. And so this is like culminating activity, where we're going to have our parents there and treat them to some tasty treats, and I get to see my babies again. So that's going to be pretty exciting. And lastly, also this Friday, the Walmart on Lake Mead by the Texas is having a grand reopening. This is the second Walmart in the city that, not just across Las Vegas, that's going to be like a mini fulfillment center within Walmart. So it'll still function as a super Walmart, but it'll be a fulfillment-type area as well. So that's going to be pretty exciting. They're having their re-grand opening this Friday.
Good reports. I want to let you know that Councilwoman Black asked be excused from tonight's meeting. We'll put that on record. So now is the time, I'm going to turn the city council meeting over for a minute to our redevelopment agency. Our chairman is Ms. Groine Brown, and then we'll come back to the city council meeting when she's finished.
Thank you. So this is a redevelopment agency first public forum. So now is the time to speak on any posted redevelopment agency agenda item. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers on the phone? No, ma'am, we do not. Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public forum. Let's move on to the redevelopment agency agenda.
Item one, approve redevelopment regular meeting agenda for April 6, 2022. Chairwoman Goinz-Brown and agency members, it's our recommendation to approve the agency agenda as published.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda as published.
Move to approve as published.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Chairwoman Goinz-Brown and agency members, the consent agenda consists of items numbers two and three. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion about the consent agenda.
Move to approve as published.
Motion passes. Wow. Well, moving on to the second public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers on the phone? No, ma'am, we do not. With that, I'll close the public forum, and I will adjourn this meeting of the redevelopment agency. Back to the city council and the mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to our regular city council meetings. You people are here for the redevelopment, and she can leave if you'd like. But going on to the public forum now. Now is the time to set aside, that time has been set aside to comment on posted agenda items. So if you want to speak on any items on today's agenda, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we also have any blue cards for the posted agenda items on the phone?
No, sir, we do not.
Is there anybody from the general public who would like to come up and address the council on the posted agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item four, approve city council regular meeting agenda, April 6, 2022. Mayor and council, item nine has been requested to be continued to the April 20th, 2022 meeting. It's our recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take the motion to approve the agenda as minus number nine, right? That's correct.
Yes, sir, as amended.
Okay, thank you.
I'd make motion to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items number five through 43. And remember, it's a recommendation to continue item nine until April 20th, 2022, the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, is there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Set public future hearing dates?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll set future hearing dates as noted.
Madam City Clerk, I direct you to set those hearing dates as necessary. Moving on to business.
Item number 45, presentation, discussion, interaction regarding the proposed 2023/2027 capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Oh, Mike, nice to see you. Mr. Hudgens?
Nice to see you as well.
Welcome.
Check. There we go. Hello, Mayor and council. For the record, Mike Hudgens, manager of Engineering and Construction Services, here to present the five-year capital improvement plan. Before I get started, I'd like to thank, obviously, this is a big load, a lot to go through. We won't go through it all tonight. I've been warned that I can't do that. But I'd just like to thank all the directors. A lot of effort goes into this, the finance team, budget staff, and most importantly, specifically Tess Cochran, who does a lot of the heavy lifting on this plan. So thank you for everyone that was involved, and hopefully I didn't, I'm sure I missed somebody, but you know who you are. Before I get into the details of the plan, I just want to go over real quick, what is a capital improvement and what is a capital improvement plan? So capital improvements deal with purchase, construction, replacement, addition, or major repair of public facilities and major equipment. Capital project is of relatively high monetary value, at least $25,000, has a long life, and results in the creation or revitalization of a fixed asset. It is relatively large compared to other capital outlay items in the annual operating budget. What is a capital improvement plan? It is a multi-year plan used to identify the coordinate and coordinate, excuse me, public facility and equipment needs in a way that maximizes the return to the community. Advanced planning of all city projects help the city council, staff, and public make choices based on rational decision-making rather than reacting to events as they occur. Major improvements, which can be funded from available revenue sources, reflecting the city council priorities. So the CIP is a five-year document with the first year of the plan recognized as the capital budget, which appropriates funds necessary to implement a capital improvement and is ultimately incorporated into the annual city budget, which will be presented next. The value of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 23 through 27 amounts to $743,612,896, with a capital budget of $290,593,027. So you'll see the CIP program trend, which you'll see a little dip in '21-'25, kind of the COVID impacts. However, since then, the five-year CIP has increased by approximately 17% to 21% per year since the '21-'25 plan. Fiscal year 23-'27 CIP annual breakdown. So the five years are broken down as follows. Capital budget for fiscal year '23, $290.59 million; '23, $205.23 million; '24, $116.78 million; '25, $64.64 million; and '26, $66.38 million. The declining nature over the five-year period is reflective of the reliability of funding models and carryovers from ongoing projects, as well needs are better defined in the near years. Oftentimes, projects are multi-year in nature, and costs tend to shift to subsequent years due to bidding, delays in awards, or long lead procurement and ordering. So this will show a breakdown by revenue source. It should be noted, since 2002, a majority of funding for the CIP is externally funded. Additionally, funds designated for capital projects are typically not eligible for use for operating expenses with few exceptions. For the '23-'27 CIP, the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Regional Flood Control District, and Utilities Fund make up more than 61.5% of the five-year funding. So this slide shows the funding program by the type of project, with the largest being transportation, followed by flood control, then water, municipal facilities, and sewer. So in conclusion, this document reflects the capital needs of the city over the next five years to the tune of $743,612,896, with a capital budget of $290,593,027 for fiscal year '22-'23, and is fiscally constrained. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on specific projects that are currently underway or are proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director. That is probably the finest presentation I've ever heard in my life. It was a good presentation. I think we all learned something. No, I mean, really, you know, usually we get going and we don't spend enough time. But I have a question, Ryan. It might be for you, it might be for Dale. The American Rescue Plan Act grant, that's number three here, but that's not the same program that's coming from what? How would American Rescue dollars tie with this? Would you have to come up with another capital improvement plan to spend that money, or what's your plan on that?
Yeah, so the, those dollars aren't really included in a lot of the CIP projects. We are clearly, from management's perspective, we would like to use those dollars in CIP projects because of the one-time nature of the dollars, which conforms to the one-time nature of CIP-type projects, if that kind of answers.
Is there, can you give me an update on what's going on with the federal plan?
So we're in compliance as far as where we need to be in recording and reporting back to the feds on the plan. What we've been doing internally as staff is we hope to bring to council in the next probably month or so a conceptual plan and some ideas and thoughts that we have and recommendations in regards to how to utilize those funds as well as other one-time funds that we've identified in the budget. We think that it's important to look at that. We also have been prudent in how we've approached it. If you noticed last week, there was a lot of consternation by other local governments in regards to the federal government possibly clawing back some of the dollars, because we've received half of our dollars. We don't receive the other half, I think it's until May 10th. So other governments, because they've already allocated or programmed those dollars, we're really in a tough spot because they built that into their budgets. We have not done that. We've taken a more prudent course where we've set those monies aside, where we can take a very thoughtful approach. We're taking a thoughtful approach. I know that Director Easter and Chief of Staff Gibson have been working on an approach of how we allocate the bucket of those dollars for nonprofits, wanting to really follow a little bit of some of the nonprofits that have been funded by other jurisdictions so that we can be there to come in with some dollars to make sure they can continue programming instead of just, you saw during the pandemic, a lot of nonprofits received a bunch of dollars, and then how they use them sometimes was mission-specific, sometimes it wasn't. So we think we're taking a more prudent approach by covering budget items now, dealing with our budget, but taking those other wind dollars and just putting them to the side for later program, for later ideas.
So just a question. You mentioned regional. Can you give me an idea, what is happening with your other communities, your city managers? Where do you guys, your circuit for projects or what's going on?
Well, one of the things we've tried to do is, we recognize that the federal dollars that all the entities were receiving were being targeted by some of our regional nonprofits, nonprofits that might be located in a specific locale, but they actually provide services for the entire region. And because of some of their needs and some of the big ideas that they have, they actually would require participation from not just the local governments, but also from the state. Because we commonly forget, the state, you know, where we got millions, they got billions. So there's a lot of federal dollars that came into the state of Nevada. And our thought there is, we've been working collectively with other local governments to identify regional-type programs, maybe, for example, there's one in affordable housing where they need a commitment of over $10 million, more than what any one entity can do. But if all of us collectively work together, plus dollars from the state, we're able to realize that opportunity. So we've just been working collaboratively with other jurisdictions to identify these, because we didn't want these stakeholders to go to each entity and double-dip, triple-dip, quadruple-dip.
Or not get funded enough, yeah.
Or correct.
So this last question, if you guys have questions, have been time limit. I mean, with these federal dollars, what do the time limits look like?
So there are time limits on when we have to have report back to the federal government. We've got another one coming up shortly. And then allocation of funds have to be spent by end of 2024 or beginning of 2024. So there are dates. I don't, unfortunately, don't have the specifics. I can have Director Easter report back. I'll put that in an upcoming manager memo. But we are in compliance with that. We continue, we intend to maintain compliance in that area, and we're perfectly fine there.
But we can wait till you come back with the program to tell us your timeframe. I just wanted to-
Yeah, we're not pressing against it. We're years out.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mike? We, Mike, you did a good job on this. So we're going to, we're going to call for motion to approve and. So, we're gonna pro, we're gonna call for a motion to approve and, excuse me, guys, we're gonna call for a motion to approve the proposed 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan. The chair will take a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Thank you very much.
Item number 26, discuss and receive tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Thank you, welcome, Director. Hardy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. A second finance presentation, I know you guys are all excited. This one, this one is the tentative budget for 2022, 2023. Just to remind you, this is required that we bring to, bring forth to you, but we will bring you the final budget next month, okay? So, jumping right to it, the 2023 tentative budget includes $802 million of total appropriations. That, their major items include hiring new staff, so we have 129 new positions in this budget. We have a cost of living increase of 3%, and we have multiple items I think are, are great for the city, including leadership training, retention strategies, and succession planning. And we are compliant, all the points of the plan are compliant with required funding statuses. So, the next slide is, I just wanted to detail that, those new positions, as you can see there throughout the city, we have positions being added to general government, public safety, utilities, and many other areas. So, it's not just one area that's growing, it's, we have an opportunity to add positions in multiple different areas. This next slide is a detailed revenues and expenses for the general fund. Couple of things I wanted to highlight is, some of the major revenue items come straight for the state, they give us the projections for C-tax and for property taxes, and although it's currently showing that we expect to close out 2022 with more revenue than we're projecting in 2023, we can always revise that as we get closer and as more information comes, becomes available. Additionally, one of the things that I think we might need to revise for the final is, we are seeing that some outside services with inflation and the things that are going on, some of our contracts that we're trying to renew, it's becoming more expensive. And so, when we present the final to you, there might be a couple of outside services that we increase the budget for, or request to increase the budget for. But we have adequate funding for the, the projected expenses in the general fund. This next slide is one of my favorites, it shows all the funds, the ending fund balances by funds, so you can see where the 802 is, is projected to be spent by, you know, in which fund it comes from. And again, we are compliant with all, we plan on sending this up to the state in the state forms if it's approved tonight. And with that, I can entertain any questions you might have about it.
I have a couple, but I'll listen. You know, one time we moved our ending fund balance up, I mean, the only reason I bring that up is, who knows what the world's gonna be looking like in six months to a year? And we, we were hardly at four at one time, and now we're up to eight. I'm just curious, is that something, as a finance director, you guide us, that you have thought about?
Absolutely. Just so you aware, 8%, is about one month's of expense, and I think during the fiscal crisis, that was as much as the city could afford to have in the ending fund balance at the time. Now that we're in a period of, of growth adding positions, and because, although the, the market has been good, I don't know what the, the, the future holds, I do think it's prudent to hold a, a higher fund balance than that 8%. Keep in mind, two months would be 16%, which I still think is, is low. And so, I do think it's, it's prudent to be mindful of, of saving above the minimum 8%.
Where did the state bump us up to, and then they allowed people, was it 12%? What, what was the, the height of the, of the amount? Do you remember, Ryan? Do you remember anybody?
You mean, what was the bottom that we went to?
Well, we went to the bottom, but I thought at one time they said the state, the cities, the cities could go up to 12% or 16%.
Yeah, fiscal watch started, starts if you go below, is it below eight?
I believe so.
Yeah, so that's, that's where we found it, is around three, because, and that's what put us in state receivership.
Yeah.
We had a city ordinance that was, that Will was referring to, that was it, was it at 12, and then they moved it to eight?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, that's, and so that's where we were as far as ending fund balance. In, in partial reference to your question to mayor is, remember, in, in the last budget, you all approved a rainy day fund, which has been fully funded to the maximum that we're allowed to by law, so that's something that didn't exist before. So, we do have, there are some things in this budget that are available for end briefings with all of you. I've, I've made no bones about the fact that I believe that we are on the cusp of a recession. I don't know how big it's gonna be, how volatile it's gonna be, deep, all those kinds of things. But I do believe this, this budget recognizes that very potential reality, all market trends are suggesting that that's the case, and we'll be in a much better position than what the city was in the past. One great example that, that I use, and have used throughout this, we've in particular talked about it during this, building of this budget, was, is it a little over 5 million that we get annually from marijuana? And that's something that we've had repeated questions about why we don't put that into reoccurring funds. And my concern has always been that putting that in reoccurring funds is subject to, once it becomes approved by the federal government, they will levy their tax against it, and we could see an 80% decline in those funds. And so, by hiring people and putting that in reoccurring, that could create a problem moving forward. And as we sit here right now, I believe they're debating this, this very item in the House of Representatives in U.S. Congress. So, it is a very real possibility, and I think that we've, we've protected ourselves against these kinds of things.
I'm, I'm just remembering the day Isaac and I showed up here, you know, when we got elected, and I think at that time, the city had been up to being 2,200 to 2,400 employees, and it just went down to 1,100. I mean, it was just bones, you know, barely any meat on the bones. And now I can see we're up to 1,659. I just want to congratulate you, you're in good times, we're still 500 employees, we're doing what we need to do for our residents with the, the proper workforce that you have, you know, but you are recognizing retirees, you're recognizing growth there is that you need, but I, you, you both feel good about that, where we're at right now.
Yeah, I think that, and you could even see it in the CIP graph maybe clearer in the last presentation, is, we felt that we were starting to kind of hit the stride of the city, we had, had made the critical changes in, with employees, with contracts, everything had kind of adjusted to the new norm, and we started to see some growth. And then, I felt that the last couple of years, the budget that we brought was, one was a significantly changed budget in April of 2020, and then last year was a, was a budget that was not something that we would have envisioned in 2019. And I kind of felt, felt those budgets were wait-and-see-type budgets. They were very, I think they were prudent budgets because we didn't know what was going on. And even though we, sometimes when I'm in a rush out of my office, I feel like I'm forgetting something, and I realize it's my mask, I'm forgetting my mask, but we don't have masks anymore. But yet, we still are in the middle of a pandemic, and one of the things that we identified early on is the belief that the health crisis would go away before the financial crisis went away. And we might even be seeing the health crisis go away before the financial crisis even really presents itself, because of the sheer amount of, of dollars that have been printed by the federal government in order to prevent a financial crisis. But what it's done is, it's also destabilized markets in other areas, which we're very concerned about. I believe that this budget, especially if you look at the, as Director Hardy had these goals in this budget, as I, as I saw those before, I felt that, is it in this budget, or, oh, yeah. If you look at those goals, I felt this was the first budget that, that we've really seen that kind of has a lot of council priorities in it, as far as expanding services for residents, and leadership training, retention strategy, all those kinds of things. Like, when I see this budget, I feel like, oh, good, we're finally starting to, tentatively, but we're at least sticking our, our, our foot in the water as we start to progress forward as a city. We're very cognizant of the uncertainties that exist, we're not going to repeat the mistakes of the past, and I think that this budget reflects that.
Director Hardy?
The only thing I wanted to add is, I forgot to mention my team, I have a great budgeting manager and great analyst that worked for him, and they worked with all the directors throughout the city, city management, to make sure everybody's input got into, into this presentation.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I know I've taken time on two issues here today, but I just wanted to, do you have a question, Pam? No, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so, I appreciate you coming up, Will, that was the second-best presentation I've seen in my life. So, we're gonna call for a motion to receive the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Chair will take a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'm really happy to see this. Again, I, I, I share your sentiments, and with that, I make a very enthusiastic motion to receive.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 47, introduce ordinance number 3103, extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas by annexing 12 parcels of land generally located northeast of Las Vegas Boulevard and Interstate 15 intersection, and providing other matters properly related thereto. Item number 48, introduce ordinance number 3110, extending corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas by annexing three parcels of land generally located at the northwest corner of Mount Hood Street and Washburn Road, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mayor, Council, item 49, introduce ordinance number 3112, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 5.0 plus or minus acres from the M1 Business Park Industrial District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District, ZNO2 2022, Pecos and Rome Apartments for property located at the southwest corner of Pecos Road and Rome Boulevard, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 50, introduce ordinance number 3113, ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 7.4 acre plus or minus acres from a PED Plan Unit Development District and a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to a PED Plan Unit Development District, ZNO3 2022, North Fifth and Azure, consisting of 108-unit multifamily development for property located at the northwest corner of North Fifth Street and Azure Avenue, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 51, introduce ordinance number 3115, an ordinance amending Title 17 and Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas, related to zoning ZOA 01 2022 Health and Fitness Center by amending the permitted use table 17.20-1 to allow health and fitness centers as a special use in the M2 General Industrial District, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. And Director Luke? I just have something here that says you're going to address this on item 52, is that correct?
Mayor, Council, item 52, introduce ordinance number 3119, an ordinance of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada approving and adopting that certain development agreement between the city of North Las Vegas and Legacy AK LLC, a Pacific Group company, for the development of approximately 135.36 net acres of land identified as the JCC South, generally located at the southwest corner of CC 215 Beltway and Pecos Road, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, item 53, introducing ordinance number 3121 of the city of North Las Vegas, amending sections 030, 120, and 210 of Chapter 8 of Title 2 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code, and ordinance number 3071 to ensure consistency with the North Las Vegas City Charter, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill, you've got some big things happening in your area. Yeah, you're really moving now. Thank you very much for those great introductions here. We're gonna move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our city attorney reminded me that it's 4%, I don't remember what I said, 4% is what triggered state receivership, and we were like around 2%. So, 4% is what triggered and put us under fiscal watch, that was, I think there were three things we weren't in compliance with, that was one of them. So, clearly, we're, we've improved dramatically since then. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, Mike Hudgens, thank him, I know he thanked his team, but thank him personally, and Dale Daffron, especially Tess Cochran, for their work in putting together the CIP. It's always nice to have the, such intelligence and dedication to putting together a document that we know we can rely on and work on, and it's very important, it becomes even more important now than maybe it did before, because now we actually have funds to spend. So, having that team working on that, it's just wonderful. Also, finance with, I want to thank Mike McDonald and Justin O'Brien and Michael Smith for their efforts. We, I don't know how many times we meet together on the budget, but it's a lot, and Sally really kind of jumped in early on, and we call them Sally's Meetings at the very beginning because she wanted to have these budget meetings to understand the staffing side of it, and even though I don't want to repeat that again, because it was a lot of meetings, that part was, it did, I think, help a lot with the budget, because as you see in the budget, it really is focused a lot on staffing, which is important because that's an increase in services, and that's something that I know that, I've heard you all talk about, and I know management's talked about, the fact that as we, as we see these increases with employees, and it's important that we're able to be competitive in the marketplace with our employees, it's also important that we, that our residents are able to see an increase in services to them, and I think that that's what this budget represents, is an increase in services to our residents. So, I just want to thank all the team members that, that worked to put that together. It is not a small task, it's what some of them are working on all year, quite frankly, and then we, we bring it to you all as a, as a, as a recommendation for the priorities, and I think this represents and reflects the priorities of council. So, I just want to thank them, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. We are going to move on to the second public forum now. This is time set aside to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight, but are within the jurisdiction and control of the city of North Las Vegas. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember that no items raised during the second public forum may be deliberated or acted upon by the city council. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or the city staff for action for the city council later date. Madam City Clerk, oh, pardon me, sorry, Mayor Protem, I've got a blue card here from, is there anybody on the phone? That'd be my question.
No, sir, there's none.
Okay, I'll work with Richard on this, okay? So, I'm gonna say Deng Talak, is there, is there anybody here with that name? Oh, please, oh, Pastor, you're still here, all right. You wanted to pray over the capital improvement plan, is that what you wanted to do? We'll take it.
Um, no, and I'm, I'm a little bit of a neophyte on some of the things, but I've been on boards before and things, but I did want to bring up just a couple of items for you guys to consider, as, as you talk about five-year plans and capital improvements and things like there. So, I've lived in the community for 18 years, so I've been on Washburn and Las Palmeras for 18 years, same house, same community, taught at Mojave High School. And so, I think, I just wanted to bring up a couple of issues, and I'm not saying that nobody is considering any of these things, I, I obviously haven't read every, I mean, all the plans, but I know as a teacher, and as a parent, as educator and now pastor, I see there's some definite issues in our community that I really feel like are important to think about as we move forward as a community, as a city. And as I drive around and see all these houses being built as we expand north, you know, towards 215, there's, there's just houses being built everywhere, and, and sometimes it can seem like it's a place where we build houses and schools and almost nothing else other than some commercial retail. And so, I think, one thing to me is the community centers. You know, we have Silver Mesa, and then we have the Neighborhood Community Center, but as you have all this massive northward expansion, you know, we do have the YMCA up there, but it, I think there's just a little bit of a lack of some places for the community to be together and do some things. Obviously, you guys did an amazing job with Craig Ranch Park, and I tell people that visit here, it's one of the greatest parks you'll ever visit in the country, and you guys did an amazing job with that, the community really loves that park. But I think the issues that I see, there's a lot of gaps, especially, I've been a physical therapist for 28 years, there's a huge issue of healthcare here, just access, a real lack of specialists, so I don't know if you've known, if you've had to go any specialists in Las Vegas, you usually go over to Sineo, or you go south, or, so there's a huge deficiency in healthcare here, but especially in specialist opportunities, opportunities for counseling. And as you probably know, you don't know this, but I have started a foundation to work with the Clark County Foster Care System, and I do work with them. A high percentage of the children in the foster care system come from our community, much higher percentage than just the pot, you know, when you compare the percentage of the kids in the system versus the of the kids in the system versus the population, it's a high percentage. So issues of counseling, even homeless youth, housing, uh, homeless teens. So when I taught at Mojave, there were many times a child was homeless or didn't have a foster family, they had to go down to Child Haven, which was way south, they had to get on a bus, they had to ride to Mojave High School, hour and twenty minutes, change buses twice, city buses, do their stuff, try to do their homework when they, and it, it was just a mess. So, um, and a place here for youth to gather. There's not a lot of places for youth to gather, except Craig Ranch Park, they gather, but almost like a, you know, a Boys and Girls Club, or a big place that they can do things, they can go work out, they can go have meetings, have clubs, have organizations that they want to be involved in. And, and so, um, I just wanted to bring those issues up, and I also wanted to say, um, I also, I have a consulting business on the side, and I've started a foundation for foster children, and I'm a pastor now, and I'm an educator. Um, but I've already explored some models. There's, so in Lafayette, Indiana, that's the state I'm from, is Indiana, there's a church, uh, city partnership, they built a very large community center together, and the church runs the community center, and they staff it, and it has a gymnasium, it has a swimming pool, it has all these things. They have, um, counseling, uh, classrooms, they have school education opportunities and different things like that. So, um, I know I'm early in our process as a church, we just started in August, but I would be looking forward to ways that we can really help the city meet some of these big needs that our community has, and to try to strengthen our community, and, and especially in the area of human services. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up and bring that to your attention, some thoughts for the council.
Without deliberating on this item, the city manager today has, is working on that right now, but you can catch him afterwards, but he's gonna be bringing back some stuff to the city council concerning that. So you're, you're right in line, and we, by the way, we work for you. Never apologize for telling us what we should do, all right?
Well, I've, just some ideas to think about. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to come up and address the council? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.